Hi, I'm Barry DiChristofano, the Plimpton Town Moderator. If you're in Plimpton, you may know me. If you're in Carver or Halifax, you don't. But if you're watching this, it must be a slow night. So I'll try to... A lot of the things I'm going to tell you will also apply to your town meetings and your town moderators. So first of all, I want to talk about what is town meeting? Town meeting is where the legislative body of the town, which is the citizens, get together and pass all the laws and all the appropriation, all the funding for the coming fiscal year, the money year of the town. You can think of the Board of Selectmen and the other boards as being part of the Executive Department, if we want to make an analogy to the federal government or the state. But the people are the legislative body. And that's what town meeting is. It's a coming together of all the voters in town to make these decisions for ourselves. It's a great demonstration of democracy because you get a vote in every dollar of your taxes that gets spent. And you can't say that big government is doing this or big government is doing that. We are the government, and that's what town meeting is. So as to town meeting, it's kind of unique to New England, basically. There are some other parts of the countries that have it. But this is traditionally a New England type of thing, going back hundreds of years. So let me talk about how it operates. So as the moderator, the moderator runs the town meeting. The moderator is in charge of keeping pace, of making sure the discussions are as full as they need to be. And my personal approach is everyone who wants to speak will get an opportunity to speak. I limit it to three minutes, and I time it. Someone cannot speak a second time unless everyone who wants to speak a first time has their chance. And if you come up to speak a second time, it needs to be to bring up another point of discussion that hasn't been made before. You can't do it just to get the last word in, okay? I'm going to refer to some notes here. And a town meeting works off of what's called the warrant that's put together by the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. And each article, which is a section of the warrant, is a different topic before the town, and that's what we discuss and then vote on. And I'll talk more about the specifics of this year's town meeting warrants in a little bit. Okay, a couple of things that happen in a town meeting. Like I said, there's a discussion. Every registered voter can rise to speak. If there's a motion that's not worded exactly the way you want it, you're free to offer an amendment to that motion. And if that amendment is seconded, then there'd be a discussion on the amendment, which you would need to provide in writing so that we all know exactly what it is you want. And then we would vote on that amendment. If that passes, now we go back to the... Instead of the article, now we have an amended article, and we have any further discussion and then a vote on the amended article. If your amendment fails, then we go back to just the article as worded. Often you'll hear, not often, but a few times at each town meeting, usually when I read, "Okay, we're on Amendment 27 now," and I'll read it, someone will stand and say, "Motion to pass over." That is usually from one of the sponsors of the article. And it's usually because either they have decided since the time the warrant was finalized that maybe this isn't the right year to put it forward. Circumstances have changed. Usually something like that. It's no longer relevant, and so there'll be a motion to pass over. I'll take a vote on that. If that passes, then we just skip that article and go on to the next one. Okay. This year, as of the past two years because of the COVID situation, there'll be an article in The Express this Friday from me, a letter from me, saying what to expect at this year's town meeting. So if you've been to the past two years worth of town meetings, you'll know that instead of having us all in the auditorium, we've divided it in two rooms, the auditorium and the gymnasium at the Denit, with the primary room where all the boards are in the gymnasium. And then Brian Wick, who's been assisting me as moderator, who's a former town moderator for Plimpton, acts as my eyes and ears in the other room. So we'll do that same setup, but a couple differences. Masks will not be required this year. If you want to wear a mask because you're more comfortable with that, you're absolutely free to. If when you get into the gymnasium and you see, "Ah, it's a little too crowded for my comfort level," I'd say, "Go into the auditorium," and you can watch the town meeting. We'll have cameras set up, as we've done before, and you can see everything and hear everything that's going on in both rooms, no matter where you are. But there'll probably be a little more space in the auditorium if that makes you more comfortable. That's absolutely fine. We'll have room for more people in the gym this year because one section of the gym won't be blocked off as it had been in the past couple of years. Again, because some restrictions have eased up in the operations of what they do up at the Denit, there'll be room for more seats in the gym. And there'll still be space for proper social distancing, and that's another thing. When you arrive at a town meeting, like last year, there'll be two clerks in the front foyer, A to M or A to L, and one half of the alphabet and the other half of the alphabet. We're not going to have tape on the sidewalk anymore saying, "You got to stand on this spot, stand on that spot." But please use good social distancing practices and give plenty of space between you and the next person if they're not part of your immediate family, okay? Just let's keep ourselves as safe as we can, but we don't have some of the hard restrictions we've had in the past. Also, if you get there and decide, "Gee, I wish I had brought a mask and I don't have one," the fire department has very generously offered to have a couple of boxes of masks available. You can grab one from one of them and put that on if you'd like. Okay, the meeting starts at 7:00 PM, so please try to arrive around 6:00 PM so that you can get registered and get a seat and get settled in the either gym or the auditorium, wherever you want to go. There'll be three microphones, as in the past years. Three in the gymnasium, one in the center aisle and one on each side aisle. When you want to speak, come up to a microphone and wait to be recognized by the town moderator, which is me. If someone's already at a microphone, please stand a safe distance behind them. And let's not have more than two people at a microphone, one speaking and one waiting. Let's not have more than two at any given time, just again to keep plenty of space around everybody because we're not fully out of this thing yet. In fact, we're using two rooms because back in January, we had to make a decision about going back to the old way of everybody in the auditorium or to use the two rooms because we needed to get an external audiovisual company to come in and help us with some of the setup if we're going to use two rooms. And because back in January, Omicron was raging after discussing things with Town Administrator, we decided to go ahead and plan on doing the two-room setup as we've done in the past because we needed to make that commitment with the AV company if we were going to use them. And there'll be one microphone only in the auditorium because there's generally not that many people there. Okay. Don't adjust the microphones again because it's handling it. We don't want to be passing any germs around, viral germs or bacterial germs, if you just even have a cold, from handling the microphones. They'll be set at an intermediate height. You may need to stoop a little or stretch a little bit depending on your personal height, but please just do it that way. The school will be closed off, except for the entrances. And when the meeting's over, and I'll reiterate this next Wednesday night at the end of the meeting, when it's over, please just exit the building by the closest exit to the outside. Don't congregate in the hallways within the building. Thank you. So that's that part of it. Now let's get to the meat of town meeting, the warrant. I think you've all gotten this in the mail by now. It tells you when the meeting is, next Wednesday, the 18th, at 7:00 PM, and where it is up at the Denit Elementary School. The evening gets broken into the town meeting and what we call the special town meeting. So let me talk about what the difference is. So the town's fiscal year, like the state's fiscal year, which is the year used for budgeting purposes, runs from July 1st of a given year through June 30th of the following year. So for instance, right now, we are in fiscal year FY '22, and that ends June 30th of this year, at the end of next month. July 1st of this year, a month and a half from now, begins fiscal year '23, FY '23. So all the items in the annual town meeting warrant deal with fiscal year '23, the year that's coming up that starts in July, July 1st. All the expenditures we decide to make at town meeting are relevant only to July 1st of '22 through June 30th of '23. Usually, there are things that come up since last May, the previous May, that have to be dealt with before June 30th. But they weren't anticipated and they weren't on the warrant last May. So to take care of those, we'll stop at 8:00 and have what's called the special town meeting. And this is enclosed in that mailing you got from the Finance Committee. There are nine articles in here, and these deal with items that have to be dealt with before June 30th, all right? And because last May, we allocated all our money that we thought we would have for fiscal year '22, these things are usually funded from other line items. So at this point in the year, you know, you get towards the end of your budget, you say, "Oh, I had a little bit... I set aside more money for this than I needed." And so a lot of these things will be funded by shifting money from one of last year's line items into a new line item to pay for whatever these things are. And if I look through these things, I'm not going to read them all for this video. I'll just kind of summarize them. There are things like, "Oh, we had extra in the county pension line, so we're going to take some of that and move it because we had an unanticipated payout in county retirement for this year." So it moved from one line to another. But still, what the Finance Committee does is try to keep things related. So in this case, it's all related to retirement funding. Some have to do with building maintenance, things like that. So there's an article where there was more money allocated in special ed, special education line last year than turned out that was needed to be expended. And that changes a lot because when the school committee puts that together, they're never really sure how many students, special ed students, they're going to have that year, so they have to make an estimate. So the last article of the special is taking some money that wasn't needed from the special ed line and using it for other costs, school costs that have arisen, again, that need to be dealt with before June 30th. So that's the special. The annual. The annual warrant is the big one, and that's what takes most of the night. And this year, it has 41 articles. That's kind of typical. I think last year, maybe we had something in the upper 30s. I've been in town, my wife and I have been in town about 30 years. I don't think I've ever seen anything, even in the high 40s. Maybe we've go that high, but not usually. Usually, it's around 40 or so. And they come into different categories, which I'll explain to you as we go through here. Okay, so I'm going to put this one aside because that's all stapled up, and I'm going to take my copy of the warrant. So there are certain groups of articles that I, in my own mind, I consider housekeeping articles, and I'll talk about some of them. Capital expenditure articles. Bylaw modifications is a group that we're going to have this year. We've had a few in the last couple of years. So we'll just walk through the warrant real quick. The first two are what I call housekeeping. I make a call for any reports that any of the town committees want to make. And then we authorize the treasurer to enter into a compensating balance agreement. So first of all, at the back of the warrant, the Finance Committee has very nicely added a couple of pages of a glossary to explain some of these terms to you, if you're not familiar with the town meeting and a lot of these things. So a lot of the terms that you see in here, if you don't know what they mean, you'll find the answer, the definition, in the back of the warrant that was mailed out. But also, if during town meeting, at any time, you hear a term you don't understand, raise your hand, come up to a mic, and ask for an explanation. Definitely, you should know what you're voting on when you vote on something. And if you don't, just ask. So a compensating balance agreement is basically we authorize the treasurer to take out a loan for something if they need... I don't know if this happens as much as it used to, but back when we paid the taxes twice a year, fiscal year started July 1st, but the treasurer's office didn't start getting property tax money until November. And so often, they needed to make a short-term loan to get through till the tax money started rolling in. With the quarterly payments, I don't know if that's as much of an issue as it used to be. But anyway, basically, we tell the treasurer, "Yeah, go ahead and get a short-term loan to get this money so that we can pay our bills until the tax money can pay it off." Article 3 is always the wage recommendations for non-contract employees. So the Wage and Personnel Committee puts together a chart with different positions, highway department, EMTs, library director, offices or jobs that we don't have a written contract for. There's only a few that we actually have hard contracts for. And these wage recommendations are usually arranged that the department head then has the flexibility to pay their staff member somewhere within that range based on their experience or their performance or whatever, okay? Article 4 is the big one as far as usually time, and that's the budget, or it's referred to sometimes as the omnibus budget. That's where every one of your tax dollars that the Finance Committee expects to come in, either through tax money or something called the cherry sheet, which is state educational support, or Chapter 90 money, which is money that the highway department can get from the state during the course of the year, or something called free cash, which I'll explain in a minute. It's where all those dollars get expended. So before I do that, free cash, that's a term people hear every year. "Oh, we're going to take this... We're going to... Funding for this source comes from free cash." What's free cash? So at the end of, when midnight, June 30th of a year rolls around, any monies that were appropriated at the previous town meeting that haven't been spent yet are left over. And so come July, August, we have an audit of all our accounts done. The result of that audit goes to the state treasurer's office, Department of Revenue, I guess. And they look at it and stamp it and say, "Okay, the audit was properly done. This money, this amount of money was left over from the previous fiscal year." And that usually gets authorized or validated by November or so of the year. So like last November, November '21, somewhere around there, the state came back and said, "Okay, Plimpton, you did all your books right, and you had X amount of money left over from the previous fiscal year." And in fact, we can take a quick look and see what that was. That's usually here. See what that amount was for this year. No, it's to be in this one, sorry. A lot of paperwork, and I'm not even on FinCom anymore. Free cash, $258,845. So after the audit was done last fiscal year, fiscal year '21, there was $258,845 deemed to be left over. That money is freed, it's freed up, to be used this fiscal year. So that's why it's called free cash. It's basically money that's been freed up from the previous fiscal year. Okay, so that's a term that sometimes is a sticking point for people. All right, so the budget looks like this, and there are four pages of the budget. I lost count, probably about 100 line items or so. And rather than vote on every line item, what we'll do is I'll say, "Okay, the top part is insurance and pension." And there are six lines there, five lines. So I'll read down, for example, line 10, insurance premiums. The recommended amount by the Finance Committee, it's $142,000. Line 15, county pension, $611,897. And I'll read down each of those five lines. If at any point there's someone at town meeting who wants to question or wants an explanation on one of those, just from your seat, call out, "Hold." We'll hear that, I'll make a mark, I'll continue with the others. And then I'll go back, and we can discuss whatever line item somebody called out a hold on. You can stand up and say, "I don't understand why county pension is so high," let's say, or whatever. And someone will speak to that. Once we get that clarified, that discussion that's usually short is over, then I'll take a vote on that whole group as a whole. So we'll vote on five lines at a time, and so on down the budget. What did I want to say about that? Because that triggers something. County pension, insurance premiums, you put a hold on it. Oh, when you do come, so for the hold, you can just do from your seat. But when you come to the microphone to speak, please give your name and your street address. And I ask that just because it helps all of us, A, to get to know everybody because even though it's a small town and the people who mostly come to town meeting are the more involved citizens in town, they know a lot more people than a lot of other people do. But giving your name and where you live lets other people get to know you, which is good. And B, sometimes if it's a warrant article that maybe affects a certain part of town, it lets everybody know, well, you live near there, so you have a particular interest or you have a particular knowledge about the situation as opposed to somebody else who is just speaking to it out of general interest because they're a resident, okay? So please do that. At least the first time you come up, I'm going to ask you always to give your name and state your address. And if you come up much later in the meeting, I might ask you to do it again. So please do that for us. It's good for all of us. We're a small town. Okay, so that's the budget. And often, like I said, the special starts at 8:00, and it needs to start at 8:00. And so if I don't think we can get through this entire article before 8:00, what I will do is shift the items around, and we'll skip to Article 5, and we'll do 5, maybe 6, or even maybe 7, depending on what they are, and get them done before 8:00. And then after the special, we'll come back, and I'll pick up with 4, and then go back to wherever we left off. But I think last year, we were able to get the budget done before 8:00, if I remember correctly. Okay, so these, housekeeping, is the first category of things I want to talk about. Those first two, to hear the reports of town officers, to authorize the treasurer to enter into a compensating agreement. To me, I call those housekeeping. They're things we have to do annually just to make everything in town flow properly, okay? And this year, there are nine of what I call housekeeping articles. Conducting the financial audits for the coming year, that's something we always have to do. I mentioned Chapter 90 money. It's highway money that the highway department, after they say they patched parts of the road somewhere, they can apply to the state for reimbursement. But in the meantime, we have to allow the highway department to go ahead and spend money to fix that, knowing that we'll get reimbursed for it from the state before the year is out. So again, that's one of the things I call a housekeeping article. We have, at past town meetings, we have decided to buy a highway truck, a couple of fire department vehicles. And when we decide that at a town meeting, what we are deciding is to tell the town government to go ahead and buy one of those vehicles. And they're usually a rent-to-own, a lease-purchase agreement. And so we obligate ourselves to pay an annual fee, usually they're done three years, to pay a lease payment for three years, and then we own it. And so once we've obligated ourselves to do that, we have to do it. We have a contract with the company that sold us the truck to pay them. So Article 10 has four of those types of lease payment agreements lumped together, and we'll vote on that as a whole. Again, that's the kind of thing I call a housekeeping article. Community preservation. So there's a small surtax on all our tax bills to pay into and fund an account for community preservation. We voted on that about, I don't know now, 10 years ago maybe, and we all agreed to do that. And the money that becomes available from that fund, there are set fractions of it that get allocated to different subcategories of community preservation. Administrative expenses, historic resources, community housing, open space, and just a reserve amount. And so there's a certain amount of money from that total fund that we put into each of those subaccounts every year. And that's what Article 12 is about. Again, I call it a housekeeping thing. It's just something that we need to do to get on with what we do. Okay, and like I said, I see a total of nine of those in this warrant. There's another group, pilot agreements, that's payment in lieu of taxes. And these generally start to come up once solar power installations start to go into town. And so normally, things are taxed on the value of all the equipment on a business site or something like that. And you have to talk to the assessors to get the details of that or how that's done. But these things are usually huge out in a big, open field somewhere. And so instead of, in lieu of, the regular taxation system for that type of property, we do something called a pilot agreement, payment in lieu of taxes, where the owner of the solar generation station will pay the town a set amount every year over the life of the program instead of having the assessors constantly assess and reassess and having their tax value, their tax payments constantly change. It's good for the company because they have a baseline. They know what they're going to be paying the town every year for the 20 years usually that these things are in existence. And it winds up being pretty much the same for the town. It's just a different way of taxation on these types of properties. So they're called pilot agreements. And there's a few of those in this year's town meeting warrant. Three items have to do with building maintenance. I guess the other big group are bylaw modifications. So if you've been keeping an eye on what we've been doing at town meeting and in town the last few years, we have a bylaw modification. That's what they call bylaw... Excuse me a second, let me get the right terms for that. Bylaw review committee, okay? So it was recognized that over the years, we've passed bylaws at town meeting. And if you look at our town bylaws online, I think there are probably about 10 or 12 of these bylaws. And they can run anywhere from a page to six, seven pages. Some of them can be pretty long with a lot of details. So what the bylaw review committee has been doing is they've been going through all our bylaws and determining if they need to be updated or modified in some way. In most cases, it's always been, it's a matter of, "Well, gee, maybe state law has changed a little bit, and we need to modify our bylaw wording to conform to that state law." Maybe there have been cases where we've seen that our bylaw wording didn't protect the town, and that's what the bylaws are for. These zoning bylaws are to protect the town so that we keep it as we all love it. Everybody says we love Plimpton because it's such a nice, excuse me, small rural community. Well, we want to keep it that way because that's why we all came here and bought our homes here. And so these bylaws protect that, what we have now. And so if there are instances where that bylaw really didn't do what we thought it was going to do and what we wanted it to do when we passed it years ago, these bylaw review committee recommendations will be to tighten up or strengthen the existing bylaws. That's usually what happens. And there are, I think, seven of those this year, okay? And that gives me an insight to talk about voting. So most votes that we're going to take at town meeting are a simple majority. I'll ask you to raise your right hand if you're in favor of the article. Put your hands down. Raise your right hand again if you're opposed. And most times, just by a visual look, I can tell if it's a majority or not. There are some things, like any zoning bylaw is an example. They have to be a two-thirds vote. And often, I can tell that by eye, too. If most of the room stands up and two people stand up against it, I can tell that I've got two-thirds. Anytime we take money from a stabilization account, that's like a general... There's two. A general stabilization, which is a... a general stabilization, which is a rainy day fund that we spend on anything, or we have now a capital stabilization fund, which is used only for capital, large capital expenditures. Those have to be done by a two-thirds vote also. And if I can't tell by I, a two-thirds vote, we'll do what's called a standing count. And that'll mean, I'll say, okay, everyone who's in favor of Article 99, please stand and remain standing while the tellers come around and count. And so then we'll have people stand, we'll have tellers walk down the aisles and count how many people are standing in each aisle. They'll come back and report that to me and to the town clerk. We write that down. Sit down, please, all those opposed, stand. The tellers will count them. Likewise, come back, report. And then when I have those hard numbers of who stood for and who stood against, then I can determine if it's a two-thirds or not. So that's the second type of vote we'll take. And there's going to be, well, because there are seven zoning bylaw mods, there'll be seven of those, and then I think there are two or three instances where we're going to take from capital stabilization, and that'll be two-thirds votes for those also. Excuse me. I guess, well, before I go on, there's a third type of vote called a secret ballot, okay? And a secret ballot is where you put a little slip of paper that says yes or no into a box, and no one knows how you voted. There are three ways a secret ballot can come about. The town moderator can declare, for whatever reasons they feel make it appropriate, they can declare that this coming vote will be a secret ballot. The board of selectmen, as a board, can vote that a given article be done, a given article vote be done by a secret ballot. That's the second way. The third way is if a town meeting member, a resident who is at town meeting, stands up and requests a secret ballot, not demands that the moderator declare it or whatever, but requests a secret ballot, then the town moderator will say, there's been a request for a secret ballot. Are there at least six people in favor of it? And six people need to rise and say, yes, I'm in favor of a secret ballot. If that happens, then there would be a secret ballot. So there's three ways. Moderator can declare it, the board of selectmen can request it, or a resident can request it and be supported by at least six others. I personally really can't think of an instance when a secret ballot is needed. It's often done because people are afraid that residents won't stand up and vote their conscience because they're afraid of recrimination from the other side for some reason. I just don't see that happening in Plimpton. It's not the way we act. It's not the way we run things. So they're very rare. And when they do occur, there's been, I think, one, maybe, no, just one, I think, since I've been in town. What you have to do is everybody stands in orderly fashion, goes to one of the nearest clerk, town meeting clerks. You check in again, like you did when you first came that night, and you're handed a slip of paper, and you then return to your seat, and secretly, you tear it, you tear it in half, and you put whatever you want, yes or no, into a slot in the ballot box that gets brought around. And then you return to your seat. It's a time-consuming process, but like I said, it has happened. But those are the three ways. So those are the types of votes. So back to the warrant. Bylaws mods are another group. You're going to see a bylaw change. Now, this Article 5, the wage and personnel board is recommending that we take the existing wage and personnel bylaw, excuse me, which is about an eight-page bylaw that explains what the wage and personnel board is, how it's comprised, how it operates, what it does, on and on and on. They're recommending to scrap that completely and replace it with a whole new wage and personnel bylaw. And because it's like eight pages or nine pages, I haven't seen the new one yet, it's available at the town clerk's office, and you can see it there before town meeting. That is a general bylaw. It's not a zoning bylaw. And as a general bylaw, that requires just a simple majority vote, not a two-thirds majority vote. So that's Article 5. That's a majority vote because it's a general bylaw. The other bylaw changes are zoning bylaws, and those are Articles 31 through 36. Those will all require a two-thirds vote, okay? That's it. The last article is always a unique article. In this case, it's Article 41. And it reads, to see if the town will vote to adjourn this annual town meeting until 8:00 AM, May 21st, at the townhouse, for the sole purpose of conducting the annual town election, on and on and on. So what this does is, town meeting technically doesn't end on Wednesday night if we pass this last article every year. And so what this says is that technically, when you go to vote at the polls, that's still part of town meeting. And so all this article says at the end is, we're going to adjourn for tonight, and on Saturday, we're all going to go up to townhouse and vote in the annual town election. And that's all that can be done on Saturday. You can't bring up any other town meeting-type article, even though it's technically still town meeting. All you can do on that Saturday segment of town meeting is to go to the polls and vote. And then there'll be a list of all the offices that are going to be on the ballot, and then there's one question on the ballot this year as well. So you do that when the polls close at 6:00 PM on Saturday, after town meeting, next Saturday, 21st, then town meeting for the year is officially done and over. And that's the last article of the night. So I hope that makes some things clear for either you veterans who have been to town meeting before, at least you know a little more what to expect. And if you haven't been to town meeting before, maybe now you know a little more about it, and you'll come out. We usually get, so I'll tell you, we usually get about 125 or so people at town meeting. We have 2,000 voters, right? And so if you choose not to go to town meeting, basically what you're saying is, you're good with 5% of all the town voters coming and making all the decisions for you for the coming fiscal year. If you're good with that, you're good with that. I think I would want to voice, and I always go to town meeting even when I'm not a town officer, so please come on out, and it's a great exercise. That's it. Thank you. Have a good morning, afternoon, evening, whenever you're watching this. Bye.